Session of the Albemarle County School Board for February 27, 2020 is now called to order. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the temple of the Lord.
We may take just a brief moment of silence, please. Before we get started, I just wanted to announce that Mr. Oberg from the Whitehall District will not be with us this evening. He's out of the country. He'll be back in two weeks. Our first order of business is to do a microphone check. Mr. Holden, would you start us at that end?
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Katrina Colston, Rio District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Graham Page, Milla District.
Jono Alcarro, At Large.
Kaydeakov, Jack Jewitt District.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Matt Haas, Superintendent.
Deborah Collins, Deputy Superintendent.
Bernard Hairston, Assistant Superintendent.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, everybody. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. A second?
We have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. The next motion that I'd like to ask for is for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Are there any items we need to discuss? We have a motion to pass the consent agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Next up is a public comment. Mr. Page.
Good evening. We invite and actively seek the public's input in the matters relevant to the school board's governance and provide time in our meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disrespectful behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol: State name and address or voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Give written statements and other supporting materials to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to the school board. A colored-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other forms of audible support or non-support. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hand. Debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed. Tonight, we have about eight speakers. The first three, Laurianne Stoddart, Katie Morgans, and Tanis Fuller, in that order.
Where's the light?
It will start.
It'll be right in front of me. Oh, right there. Okay. Is this working? Oh, now it is. Hi. My name is Laurianne Stoddart. I'm from the Scottsville District. I'm also a teacher at Cale Elementary. This is a compilation of comments in response to the recent removal of a poster at Mountain View Cale Elementary at the direction of Dr. Matt Haas. Our purpose here tonight is to advocate for the community that feels deeply hurt. As members of the school system, teachers and staff are in a unique position to see the effects of systemic inequality on individual students in school communities. We are trying to help the county grow and get better. Dear School Board, we want restorative justice. Matt Haas's actions have done harm to the teachers, students, and families of the Mountain View Cale Elementary community. People of color within our staff, student body, and families feel demeaned and disrespected by the removal of a poster that contained nothing but historical fact and used as instructional material for teachers in our school. This is one personal comment from a staff member who is deeply hurt. There are numerous other comments, but when asked to share, did not feel safe. The comment, "As a black person, this is reality. We have to stop sugarcoating this. My mom and my dad lived through segregation in Albemarle. My mom went to burly and had to walk. This is the truth. The poster is the truth." The poster did not, this is no longer a comment, "The poster did not cause disruption. It caused discomfort. Socrates said, 'There is no learning without discomfort.'" By abruptly removing the poster and publicly and falsely claiming that Mountain View Cale teachers were not using the poster instructionally, Matt Haas robbed our school community of the opportunity for learning about and understanding each other, when Matt Haas could have led our school and the county in a bold conversation of our shared past. He chose instead to pander to those who did not want our community to evolve. He chose the easy answer over the right answer. We feel this incident is an overexample of a larger systemic problem. This isn't about schools. This is about our division. The Central Office of Albemarle County Public Schools wants to take credit for the work teachers have done to heal our community and be more inclusive to historically underserved students, but refuse to support that work with institutional changes that would truly shift the opportunities for and outcomes of these students. There are policies and priorities set by the Central Office that are beyond how a classroom teacher relates to his/her students and pedagogy. In many cases, these priorities and policies perpetuate inequalities within our school system rather than addressing the needs of historically undeserved students. With culturally responsive teachers...
Okay, Mrs. Stoddart, sorry, but that's the end of your time. If you do have a printed copy, you can give it to the clerk.
I actually have a next reader and the guidelines say that we can continue if you have a second reader to take the next three minutes, so that she should be able to finish this statement.
She's gonna pick up the reading left.
Yeah, I'm sorry. She's gonna pick up where I've left off.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
My name is Katie Morgans. I'm a Charlottesville city resident and a Cale Elementary teacher. With culturally responsive teaching, teachers have built family partnerships and framed instruction around student experience. There was no inquiry with what we were doing in K-5 with culturally relevant learning. There are teachers at Cale who, while eager to implement and use CRT practices in their classrooms and work to end inequality in education, refuse to participate in the CRT certification program because they feel they will be used as proof that the institution of ACPS is a CRT system. Until the Central Office is serious about doing the hard work of examining the implicit biases built into the fabric of Albemarle County Public School System and working toward truly creating equitable education for our students, many teachers refuse to be a gold star for the county. The removal of this poster hit us so hard because of our collective work and understanding of culturally responsive teaching. It was the wrong action. For some, your action was viewed at the very least a microaggression towards black teachers, black students, and black families at our school. Your role as a public figure in this community gives this more weight, makes this especially harmful, and should require action on your part to restore trust between ACPS and the Cale community. We would like Dr. Haas to recognize the hurt that he caused and act on his own restorative justice. Apologize for taking down the poster and for teacher blaming, putting teachers in the position that makes us defend our pedagogy and profession. This is the time to show students, families, and our ACPS community how to do it, and then grow and be better than our past. I'll read the signatures now. Jeff Handler, Helen Miller, Olivia Delf, Laurianne Stoddart, Terri Graff, X. Lucy Montalvo, Catherine Riso, X. 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 I don't want to get fired. Sarah Morgan, X. Mary Pancake, X. 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 Jess Chandler, Melanie Garth, Curtis Cherubin, Karen Mary, X. 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 Sue Harris, X. 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 Katie Morgans, X. X. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanis Fuller.
My name is Tanis Fuller, and I live in the Scottsville District. I'm incredibly disappointed in the way that Superintendent Matt Haas has chosen to direct and address the recent removal of a Black History Month poster at Cale. First, I'm unhappy with the communication around the poster removal. On February 13, parents of Cale students received an email alluding to a poster we might have heard about. This was four hours after Haas left a comment on a local radio show host's blog, assuring said host that the poster was being removed and that he, Haas, had just been made aware of it. Am I to understand that Haas felt it more important to assure a community not affected by the poster that the poster was coming down than to assure the faculty, staff, and students of Cale that he had their backs? Haas went on to several days later leave another comment on this host's blog. To whom is Matt Haas accountable? The readers of the blog, or the faculty, staff, students, and parents of Cale? He further issued statements to the press that were reported as statements to the community, but I am a member of the Cale community, and beyond the initial vague email I received from Cindy Wells, there has been no communication from Haas to us. Secondly, taking the poster down is the epitome of white fragility. Bowing to anticipated blowback from readers of a blog by taking the poster down is cowardly and antithetical to the purported Albemarle County Public School commitment to anti-racism. It sends a message to students, staff, faculty, and parents that standing up for truth isn't worth it. Let's skip it. We'll replace it with a whitewashed history of Martin Luther King. Cale cannot be a school that is committed to engaging in difficult conversations while also removing this poster. The poster was the definition of opportunity for critical discussion of history as it relates to elementary school curriculum. I read somewhere that the poster was taken down because of a specific incident of harassment between some students, though none of the faculty and staff that I've talked to at Cale can confirm that. If students were harassing each other, that's a problem with bullying at the school and needs to be addressed as such. And last, that poster was a love letter to black students. It was an affirmation of their history as creators, contributors, and sustainers of history. It is exactly a celebration of black culture and community. I imagine black staff, faculty, and students started school on February 13 believing that they were being seen. I imagine they ended the day wondering whether or not their school actually cared.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoddart, Mrs. Morgans, and Fuller. Our next two speakers are Brian Tate and Amanda Moxam.
My name is Brian Tate, and I'm Scottsville District. I'm coming here today because situation with Monticello High School. Over the last couple, I'll say the last two years, the drug problem has gained more and more issues there. This year alone, I know of three overdoses. I have yet to see any action at the school towards the drug problem. I've talked to the principal, well, not the principal, but the school faculty, I guess, about the issue, and they said their hands are tied. It's up to the school board to allow them, to allow Albemarle County's police to bring in drug dogs or somehow get the drugs under control at this school. The last two days, I know of, there has been in the red bathroom, red hallway bathroom. Students have been going there and smoking weed. Day before yesterday, it got so bad, one of the teachers walked out in the hallway and said that the odor is getting bad. You know, I feel that the school board really needs to start stepping up and doing something about the drugs in our schools. You know, it's pretty bad when it's getting to this point when students are starting to have overdoses at the school. That's all I have to say.
Please don't bring drug dogs into our kids' schools. If you heard about CHS a few weeks ago, there were five or six students that overdosed, and it's because they brought drug dogs in, and so all the kids just took the drugs that they had. So if we want to see our kids die, bring drug dogs in. Please, please don't do that. All right, so that's not what I'm here to talk about. That just disturbed me. So, I woke up this morning to a message from one of the educators in your school system that I know for a fact if you lost this person from your school system, it would be detrimental to many of the students that this person serves. The question that was sent to me was, "Is hate-free schools going to call on the school board to censure Haas?" This question might be better phrased as a statement. "I think the school board should be called upon to censure Haas for actions which directly defy the mission and vision of the anti-racism policy and which compromise the professional integrity, safety, and holistic well-being of black educators and their students within our school system." So that's what I woke up to this morning, and I think it's pretty unfortunate that we have a school system, as these teachers from Cale just brought forward, that have so many teachers that are absolutely terrified to tie their name to anything that is right. Something is really wrong with our culture, and it's not okay. This is why you can't attract and retain teachers. This is why you can't attract and retain teachers that are black and brown in particular, because it's literally not safe. I've said this in past public comments, that, you know, diversity says everybody's welcome here, but inclusion says that we designed this for you, right? There's a big difference. And there's a big difference between saying we want diversity versus saying we don't make it safe for people who don't look white majority in this school system. I also know, from hanging out at Penn Park over the weekend, I actually met with some parents there, totally by random, that shared with me exactly what happened in the interaction at Cale. And here's what was divisive. A white student said, "That poster makes me feel bad." Another white student said, "You should feel bad. We should all feel bad because we can do something better." If that's divisive, I'm really, like, I don't even have words for that. That's not divisive. These are the conversations that need to be held at a young age so that when our students get to high school, they're not combating each other over these ideologies. They need to learn how to have conversations. So we ask that the poster be put back up immediately. We ask for the restorative justice that was called for by the Cale teachers. We ask for the students to be talked to about this whole process, why it came down, why that was wrong, why we're gonna fix it. We have to role model for them what this looks like to be living in an anti-racist community to which Albemarle County has said that it wants to be. Please support the teachers. They're dying out there. You're leaving them out on a limb. As you've heard from this other gentleman, that people, they don't know what to do. They're saying, "Oh, the school board has to tell us what to do." So make some direction. Please make it quickly. We have to become an anti-racist school system, and we do that by showing our children what to do when we've made a mistake and how we fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate and Mrs. Moxam. Our last two speakers are Aubrey Hampton and substituting for Vernon Lecty, Becca Saxton.
My name is Aubrey Israel Hampton. I live in the Rio District. I'm gonna read a statement from Emily Methone. She's a white ACPS parent of two children. She couldn't be here tonight. She sent Dr. Haas an email after the Cale poster incident, and she wanted me to share that with all of you here. So, "I understand that ACPS is striving to be anti-racist. I understand that ACPS is committed to reframing the narrative. It seems to me that this poster aligns with both of those goals. This poster points out the lost potential of each human being that was enslaved. It also points out what we all will gain when we actively dismantle racism. I asked Dr. Haas, 'How is a poster with truth written on it disruptive to the learning environment? How does it not align with the values of young people, excellence, respect, and community?'" Dr. Haas responded right away, and there was one statement that stuck out in his response. He said, "I'm sorry if this situation has caused our children, staff, and community any undue discomfort or concern. I asked Dr. Haas, and I'll ask all of you now, have you come across Kenneth Jones and Temma Okun's list of characteristics of white supremacy culture? One attribute of white supremacy culture is this idea of a right to comfort. That is, this belief that we, as white people, expect to be comfortable and that we expect our children not to experience discomfort. When something like the poster, a potential learning tool, gets introduced, instead of leaning into the discomfort, the dominant culture will justify its removal as a violation of this right to comfort. This reaction is an example of white fragility. White fragility is what Robin DiAngelo defines as "the emotional response to race-based stress that presents as defensiveness, withdrawal, tears, or arguing." In contrast to this common and often unexamined reaction, she says she wants white teachers to understand that, quote, "There is a history of harm between the institution of schooling and families of color. Our schools have not done right by children of color." As part of the anti-racist efforts in ACPS, it is critical that we face white fragility. White teachers, parents, administrators, and staff must dive deeply so that they can serve children adequately. Dr. Bettina Love, a professor of education at UGA, wrote an opinion piece highlighting this need, and she says, "The shift to anti-racism does not happen overnight or after one professional development session. It happens through a process of self-discovery, healing, and learning to reject and call out racist ideas, people, and structures. It is not an approach or a method. It is a way of life. Is this anti-racism policy just a poster campaign?"
Thank you, Mrs. Hampton.
Good evening. I'm Becca Saxton. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Vernon Lecty, a teacher at Albemarle High School who can't be here because he's in parent conferences. So I apologize. I'm unable to deliver my statement in person to the board. I currently am meeting with parents of my students at Albemarle High School for parent conferences. I wanted to make sure I still would be able to update the board on the thoughts of myself and other teachers in the county. Last Wednesday morning, School Board Chair Alcarro came to speak with teachers before school about the issues many of us are facing. We had over 30 teachers come to talk and listen and better express our feelings concerning compensation and the increased workload that has been given to teachers over the last decade. I am very appreciative that Chair Alcarro met with us, and he told us he is willing to come back to continue the conversation. I would like to open an invitation to the rest of the school board as well to come to Albemarle High School to talk with teachers in order to hear firsthand from us concerning the struggles many of us are facing. I look forward to scheduling times when you can come and meet with us. I would also like the board to be aware that there is exciting news coming from the Virginia General Assembly. Our legislature is very close to passing a bill that would give public employees the right to collectively bargain. Senate Bill 939 authorizes counties, cities, and towns to adopt local ordinances authorizing them to, one, recognize any labor union or other employee association as a bargaining agent of any public officers or employees except for constitutional officers and their employees, and including public school employees; and, two, collectively bargain or enter into any collective bargaining contract with any such union or association or its agents with respect to any matter relating to them or their employment. I suspect curriculum would be high on that list, although that's just me guessing now. This is very exciting news. I'm also excited to mention that momentum for giving public sector workers the right to collectively bargain is growing. The Loudoun County Board of Supervisors and the Fairfax County School Board have both made history and voted to support the rights of public employees to collectively bargain. I hope that Albemarle County will be the next county in Virginia to make history and to do the same. I am encouraged by board members Judy Lee, Dave Oberg, and Ellen Osborne, who have signed on to the Labor Coalition Letter that has been provided to you. We are very close to showing Virginia how Albemarle County is willing to lead in giving teachers the opportunity to collectively bargain. Thank you all for bringing this right closer to reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And this ends our public comment session. So thanks to all who did come tonight to express your views.
Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna make a slight change in the schedule after the next two sessions and right before our work session and take a 10-minute break. Our next up is announcements. First, Dr. Haas?
So I have a couple of announcements. First is regarding public comment. I want to thank everyone for their comments tonight. As you can imagine, over the past couple weeks, I've received several emails offering different responses to our decision, to my decision, to remove the "They Didn't Steal Slaves" poster. I well appreciate the community engagement, as I firmly believe that openly sharing diverse viewpoints provides positive opportunity for discovery and growth. As you can also imagine, over the past several days, we've been doing more investigation into the matter, and I have more facts to share. And I will say, I decided to have the poster taken down. I'm sorry.
You're not hooked up?
Oh, the thing's not hooked up. I'm sorry about that. I decided to take the poster down not because its message is untrue or unworthy of dis- of discussion, but because it unfortunately generated a contentious environment that undermined its values. There was more that the school staff could have done prior to using the poster to set the stage for a positive dialogue and outcome. A school committee of about a dozen teachers did not seek the principal's approval because the poster was used the year prior. There were three differences from a year ago. One, the poster was enlarged. Two, it was placed in a much more prominent location just outside the main office. Three, there also was not a planned academic program to support the poster and its message as there had been the year before. Within the first week of the poster's display in the main foyer of the school next to the main office, without any caption or explanation, like many of the explanations we heard tonight, eight different staff members told the principal the poster was divisive and was setting up what they called an "us-versus-them perception." During the second week, the principal witnessed arguments among students about their interpretation of the poster's message. Four other staff members reported to the principal that they too had witnessed several such disagreements among students. I was forwarded one email from parents of an African-American child who said that a student in his class had told him the poster was offensive because his family didn't own slaves, and a student made a slavery joke, and the African-American student had to tell the student it wasn't funny. Another parent reached out to the parents of the African-American student and said that it seemed like the discussion was a space for angry white boys to express themselves. These were third graders, mind you, and the poster in its original form in Mississippi last year was created with middle school students. At the end of the second week, on February thirteenth, the principal called me to discuss how to contain these incidents and move forward. I conferred with the board's legal counsel, Mr. Jeramita, then I decided to have the poster taken down. Both the staff and the parents were informed of this decision to take down the poster on the day it was made. It became clear that in order for the poster's message to educate and inspire, we educators needed to provide some age-appropriate context and facilitate thoughtful cooperative conversations with students. Essentially, the poster by itself, without a supplemental and common lesson, missed the mark. The message on the poster, as you may know, originally surfaced last year when a middle school math teacher in Mississippi decorated her classroom door with words inspired by author and poet Nadine Drayton Keen. While I personally feel the message is both true and compelling, and its presence at Mountain View, one of our pre-K through grade-five elementary schools spawned destructive confrontations between students who obviously lacked the mature perspective to understand the intent of the message. While I decided to remove the poster, that was not our final action. With the guidance of the school division's anti-racism policy and Dr. Bernard Hairston, our assistant superintendent for school community empowerment, the school's administrative team is currently collaborating with their Black History Month committee and the remainder of the school staff to evaluate the poster, assess the situation, and determine next steps. Among their goals are uncovering the misunderstandings and misconceptions considering all perspectives, is one of the things I heard suggested tonight, and leveraging culturally responsive teaching and experiences to benefit students, the school, and community as a whole. Bernard has held meetings with the staff. He also held a meeting with African-American parents at the school this afternoon. They had several suggestions for moving forward, to include that the poster could be put on display in a more meaningful sort of way. The principal has scheduled a professional development session on identifying and responding to racial microaggressions at work during our teacher staff development day on Monday. That'll be presented by Joe Williams, who's associate dean of counseling in the Curry School. As a side note, I left it open-ended as to whether the poster, with the proper work put into it, could be put back on display. I made this clear in my conversations with Dr. Hairston. He made it clear to Ms. Wells, the school principal, and Ms. Wells, to my understanding from Dr. Hairston, made it clear to the school committee. In the meantime, yesterday evening, I had a very good meeting with Dr. Rick Turner and Ms. Jeanette Martin, the leadership of the local NAACP, to discuss the matter, as they had contacted me last week and offered to support the school moving forward. I asked if they would consider collaborating with KAL in their Black to History Month, or Black History Month program next year, just like they did this year with Burley Middle School. We had complaints about Burley Middle School's Black History Month display the year prior to this year. The NAACP worked with the staff there, and I think many of you are familiar with what they put together, but the key that I found in it was, it was put together by students, as opposed to having a poster that was copied from another poster and displayed by staff. The words from this poster on that middle school door, classroom, classroom door, poignantly and candidly emphasized the atrocity of the institution of slavery and its ravagement of human potential. It is as factual as it is emotional. As public school educators, we need to be thoughtful about our handling of such topics, especially with our youngest and most, most impressionable students. And I am saying "we." It's my responsibility that when school staff work on projects like this, that I do a better job as a superintendent to make expectations clear across the county. I would argue with the notion that the central office is trying to dictate certain performance measures or projects out in the school, but we should have consistency across the county about how we do this work. All around the county, all month, there have been absolutely amazing displays and projects done by students. I was talking to a principal, talking to Darra Bonham this morning about the recent creation of a Black Student Union at Almarle High School. It's a very powerful movement, totally inspired by the students and two African-American teachers at the school. And he recently held a panel with those students and staff so that the students can talk about their experiences being African-American students in our schools. And as Darra pointed out, it's humbling and embarrassing. And yes, I am humbled, and I'm certainly embarrassed by this situation, and I am sorry about it. I apologize to the teachers at KAL. I'm sorry to have put you in this position. I should have done a better job as a superintendent to set the stage for this work. And in fact, while often I make mistakes, especially in terms of some of my communication style, that, and that was the case here, I could have done better with that. However, I think we all need to take ownership and do a better job with these kinds of projects. Again, I want to thank all of you who have taken the time to reach out and share your perspective with me. Where there is diverse community engagement, there is hope, and that we are collectively supporting a healthy learning community. I'm gonna make one other announcement, and I'm gonna ask Mindy Moran to help me with it. If you haven't heard, the annual ACPS Visual Arts Festival is moving to galleries and shops at Stonefield this year. They used to do them at Fashion Square Mall and other locations around the county and city. On Thursday, March sixth, we'll be celebrating a special collection commemorating Freedom and Liberation Day, with the Almarle County Jazz Band previewing songs from their upcoming third annual AHS Jazz Band Swing into Spring Benefit Concert. They'll be playing at that event. The, the projects that Dr. Moran is going to introduce were actually projects that were started after Making Connections, our school-division-wide professional development in the summer, to, and it really bring home the notion of project-based learning for students and for staff, so I'm gonna let her describe the projects that are gonna be on, on, on display that night. Thank you. Thank you, Mindy.
Dr. Haas, thank you. Can y'all hear me? Good evening. I, thank you for this opportunity to share a project that we have been working on for over seven months, and that is opening next week in conjunction, as Dr. Haas said, with our annual Visual Arts Festival. Thank you. Inspired by the community celebration of Freedom and Liberation Day on March third, students from both Albemarle County Public Schools and Charlottesville City Schools have created a special visual art collection that explores the idea of liberation. To provide students with a starting point on this exhibition, on this exhibit, we asked them to consider broad questions such as, what does it mean to be liberated, and what does that liberation look like over time? And in order for both students and teachers to thoughtfully approach this topic, we supported their learning through place-based professional development, field experiences, speakers, and primary sources that would help illuminate our local context. This is the part where you stand up, guys. Teachers from across our high schools, middle schools, and even a carefully executed fifth grade lesson resulted in almost three hundred student pieces being submitted. I have some of those teachers there. Are they doing? The student work itself is breathtaking, the artist's statements equally so, and we selected twelve representative pieces to print in a limited run as exhibit cards like you'd find at VMFA or MoMA. And I think they just got passed down. Thank you, Ms. Collins. You'll see that the work, the student work is on the front, and the artist's statement is on the back. Are they passing? Are they getting down to y'all? Okay, great. But for, for everyone else out here, I'd like to share four examples of pieces from the exhibit that you can see, and one of my, where's Catherine? We actually are so grateful to have one of our student artists here tonight. This is her piece. I'll let her introduce herself, and she will read the artist's statement that's on the back of her piece.
Hi, I'm Catherine, and I'm from Monachello High.
You can pull it down.
I'm Catherine, and I'm from Monachello High School. I created a portrait of a little kid who represents all the kids that were sold and separated from their parents. In the background, I took words and sentences from a letter sent by a heart-sick wife to her husband about, about their son. Letter from Maria Perkins to Richard Perkins in Charlottesville, nineteen fifty-two, to show that what families had to go through and what they had to try, to do to try to stay together. Thank you.
The others had some sports and other commitments, so I will share a couple, some other pieces really quickly. This piece is from an eleventh grader at Almarle High School. He writes, "I decided to focus on the phrase 'liberation is hope,' which to me exemplified the efforts of freed slaves to find their family and relatives after liberation because their future was very unclear, whether or not they would ever see their families again. I drew the hands to represent the people reconnecting with their families after searching for them. To support the peace, I also added documents of freed slaves looking for their relatives, such as their mothers, fathers, and brothers." This piece comes to us from a tenth grader at Western Albemarle, was the result of a walking, a walking tour at Vinegar Hill. He writes, "Liberation is exemplified in this image by the words 'fighting for justice.' All of humanity deserves justice. The man in this photo, slightly out of focus, is a representation of those fighting for justice and freedom in a country that is continuing to try to rise above oppression." And this final piece, which is so, whoopsie, can I go back? Yes. Is so fabulous. It's a mixed-media piece. This is an eleventh grader, Kyle, from Monachello. I believe he's from the Esmond area. He writes, "The piece I created represents history that was never told for a long time. The reason I chose the old brick wall was because, when I was trying to find inspiration for this piece, I didn't know the history of the Serpentine Walls. They were created to hide the slaves at UVA during its first years and to make sure no one could hear them working. It is a history that has been forgotten, and we can walk by the Serpentine Walls every day not knowing its legacy. The ones that have been forgotten, the faces only the wall can remember." So those are only four pieces of, a great, and great many more. Oh, did I lose? There it is. As Matt mentioned, or Dr. Haas mentioned, I was hoping to invite you all, and this is your formal invitation, on March fifth, the Albemarle Band is going to be previewing music from a concert that you'll see the poster for there, that they have in another week, in which they'll be, it's called, I'm sorry, Swing into Spring Benefit Concert. Andrew LaPrada is their director, and he's been leading his musicians in thinking about the idea of housing as a modern indicator of liberation. And proceeds from their concert will go to the Public Housing Association of Residents. So in closing, I'd just like to say, I'd like to share two essential understandings that guide our work in the arts in Albemarle County schools. One is that arts, art is a means of communication, and the other is that artists are creative conduits for all societies. This shared collection with the city schools seeks to excavate and amplify our local stories in order to encourage dialogue as we seek to have an inclusive account of our community.
Thank you, Mindy.
Could you say again where, where these pieces of art are gonna be shown?
I predicted that, and that was my last slide. Can I do it? There you go. I made a little map for you. So there are three pop-up galleries and empty retail spaces at Stonefield, and so the movie theaters there, I thought that was a good central thing to see. Straight across, there's a really nice community room that will have the three, the Liberation Day collection, and next to Duck Donuts, we'll have our ceramics collection, and in one sixty will be the big two-D collection.
Thank you, Dr. Moran.
You're welcome.
All set?
All set.
Okay. Just have a couple of quick items. We were going to nominate the students who were gonna be appointed to the school board tonight. I reached out to all of them yesterday, and I'd only heard back from one so far, and so we're gonna hold off on that and nominate them and invite them to be here for our meeting on March twelfth. Tonight, some of us have nominations for the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee and the School Health Advisory Committee. And Mrs. Lee, would you like to start off?
Sure. I move that the board accept my nomination of Dr. Mark Nyhouse to the School Health Advisory Board.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, very good. Motion passes. Ms. Osborne?
I move that the board accept my nomination of David Storm to the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, and my nomination of Kristin Carty to the Health Advisory Board.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
And I'd like to nominate Gail Lavett to the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, and Rebecca Abernathy to the School Health Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motions pass. And Dr. Akoff?
We have a resolution tonight.
We do. Whereas the Virginia School Board Association has designated one week in February to be set aside as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, Jennifer, whereas the vision, mission, and goals of the school division are established by the school board and based upon a partnership of mutual trust and vision between the school board and the superintendent, and whereas by policy, the school board, together with the superintendent, takes the responsibility for ensuring that the Albemarle County Public Schools is an effective school system, and whereas the duties and activities of the clerk of the Albemarle County School Board are vital to supporting and promulgating all board actions and policies, and whereas the clerk ensures that the board meetings are conducted in accordance with all applicable state laws and board policies, and whereas the clerk is a vital contributor to the planning, efficiency, and success of all board meetings, and whereas the clerk performs such important duties as the keeper of all minutes and records of board meetings, and whereas the clerk also coordinates the appointment of citizen volunteers to such significant board committees as the Long Range Planning Committee and the Health Advisory Board, and whereas the clerk is instrumental in implementing the board's goal of broadening community participation in board meetings, and whereas these actions have included the delivery of live video streaming of board meetings to homes across the county, and the expansion of opportunities for community members to address the school board on matters of great importance, and whereas Jennifer Johnson has served the Albemarle County School Board for more than two decades, which is astonishing since she's only twenty, but initially as an assistant clerk and for the majority of her service as clerk, and whereas Ms. Johnson has performed her responsibilities and duties in a highly professional, thorough, and responsive manner, often working well beyond normal work hours, now therefore be it resolved that on the occasion of School Board Clerk Appreciation Week across the Commonwealth, that Albemarle County School, Albemarle County Public School Board expresses its deep appreciation and gratitude to Jennifer Johnson for her exceptional contribution to the board and to the Albemarle County School Division.
Jennifer, would you come around? We'd love to shake your hand.
We'd love to shake your hand.
Pass the motion?
Oh, oh, yes. So do I have a motion to pass the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
We should have a week of months, you know.
tomorrow.
Today.
Today?
Oh, today, yes.
Well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday today.
I think we should have Dr. Haas sing a tune. We need to have some of our musicals.
Any school board or superintendent business?
Mr. Alkara, we do not have any beyond the agenda.
Any business from the school board?
Can I tell you about an excellent event at K-Tech?
Would you please?
This past week.
Yes.
Stephanie was here, International Night. While I was there in another capacity, I was just very impressed with the way it was pulled together and the diversity and inclusion that I witnessed there. I thought it was amazing, so hope we can all go next year.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. It is 20 after 7:00. Let's re-adjourn at 7:30.
Aye, aye, aye.
Good morning. I'm asking you.
The meeting?
Go for it. You've got, you've got, you've got to make this.
Russell, is this you?
I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. Tonight, you will hear about two, we'll have two pieces to the work session. The first session, the first part is you're going to hear about our Project Management Oversight Committee. You heard a little bit about that last time when we talked about the anti-racism policy and the logic map for that. So you'll hear how we oversee and move forward with projects of that magnitude. And the majority of the work session tonight is going to be around our high school redesign. So you'll spend the majority of time on that. Our goals for this evening are this. We want to make sure that as a result of this work session, you understand the purpose of the PMOC process and how PMOC provides guidance to a project as large as, large as our high school redesign. We want you to understand the five major components of the high school redesign, you know, to be able to articulate to others the big picture of the high school redesign and understand the process for the development of the academies of Albemarle. And finally, we want to be, you be able to articulate the vision for the career academies and how they fit into the overall structures of high school. So first up is Jamie Gallner. She's from the Office of Strategic Planning, and she'll begin by sharing information on the project management oversight.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. The division has implemented a strategic approach to project management through the use of project management principles and the Project Management Oversight Committee. The Project Management Oversight Committee is made up of the cabinet and is responsible for identifying projects, assigning project managers, and providing support for, for the project through monitoring and closing. They invest organizational resources into projects and set the overall strategy for project selection and prioritization. The project management framework that we've established has certain steps for the PMOC, project managers, and project teams from project initiation through project close. Project portfolios are aligned to the strategic plan. Right now, our priorities and make up many projects and initiatives. Not all projects are managed by the PMOC. Two or more of the following criteria establish a project as a priority. Here's a couple of the definitions that we're using. Not every project will be monitored by the PMOC, as I stated on the last slide. One that we sent through and is now sunset is Schoology. One that's currently being monitored is our Cronos implementation. At the last school board meeting, you saw an example of a project, which was really a portfolio of projects that will be monitored by PMOC. Most of those, but not all of those projects in the anti-racism portfolio will be monitored. If you recall, you saw a logic map. That's an example of what the project manager brings to the group for comment. In a few minutes, you'll see another project portfolio, the high school redesign, that is part of this work. There will be multiple projects under this portfolio, and we will look at one piece of it tonight. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Yeah, it was pretty straightforward. Thank you, Jamie.
And part of the reason we wanted to frame it with that is that, as you see with these projects, they're very large, and trying to think about how you manage those and what kind of oversight we put in place so that those projects move along and don't get stuck and, and stay with outcomes not perhaps met. So the, we're going to move on to our high school redesign work session. When we look at our high schools, we see that many of our students leave us with some skills, but not all. Our college prep students leave us prepared for the content of college, but are not, are they prepared for the world of work or the world of independent learning? Our work-based students are prepared for work, but are they lifelong learners that can continue to learn in other formal situations? Our students in the middle, are they prepared for either? How do we extend the opportunities beyond what we currently offer in our high schools? How do we redesign high school to be better tomorrow than we are today? And so we have three key questions that we, that are fundamental when we're thinking about what we want and how we'll be thinking about our high schools of the future, our high schools now. The first one is where will our students learn? And you know, you had the FNI report that I handed to you last time. It talked about the capacity issue that we have in Albemarle County Public Schools and that, and how we landed on a center model. The other question we, other question we had was how will students be engaged? One of the, one of the things we know is a national trend is our high school students are less engaged than our middle school students. So how do we reverse that trend? It's the same for us in Albemarle County Public Schools when we ask our high school students and ask our middle school students and we ask our elementary school, school students, as they stay with us, as they progress in age, they are less engaged by the time they leave us than they were when they came. So how do we reverse that? How do we think about engagement in a way that is about around students' passion and interest? And finally, how will our outcomes be equitable? One of the things we know that we have academies now, we have opportunities for students, but it's, we don't see it as benefiting all students, and we want to think about how do we design our high schools and our high school experiences that we can guarantee that all still, all school, all students are at the table. So tonight, we have a group of educators with us. We have Mr. Jay Thomas, Director of Secondary Education. He's going to be leading most of this work session. We have Mr. Jeff Pillman, the Center's Specialty Planner. We have our high school leaders, Chad Ratliff, Rick Rehovak, Mike Craddock, Darabonam, Patrick McGlaughlin, and Stephanie Carter, and they'll be sitting at the tables with you and helping you unpack some of the work that we're doing around high school redesign. Jay?
So good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to, to share and present before we get into the work part of the work session tonight. Start with, the first slide is, is something you'll be familiar with. We shared with you before, the Fielding-Nariff FNI.
The meeting. Russell, is this you?
Okay, to our next order of business is the school division work session. First up is the project management in the division and.
I'm gonna start.
Would you please? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. Tonight you will hear about two, we'll have two pieces to the work session. The first session, the first part is you're gonna hear about our project management oversight committee. You heard a little bit about that last time when we talked about the anti-racism policy and the logic map for that. So you'll hear how we oversee and move forward with projects of that magnitude. And the majority of the work session tonight is going to be around our high school redesign. So you'll spend the majority of time on that. Our goals for this evening are this. We want to make sure that as a result of this work session, you understand the purpose of the PMOC process and how PMOC provides guidance to a project as large as our high school redesign. We want you to understand the five major components of the high school redesign. You know, to be able to articulate to others the big picture of the high school redesign and understand the process for the development of the academies of Almaral. And finally, we want to be, you be able to articulate the vision for the career academies and how they fit into the overall structures of high school. So first up is Jamie Gellner. She's from the Office of Strategic Planning and she'll begin by sharing information on the project management oversight.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. The division has implemented a strategic approach to project management through the use of project management principles and the project management oversight committee. The project management oversight committee is made up of the cabinet and is responsible for identifying projects, assigning project managers, and providing support for the project through monitoring and closing. They invest organizational resources into projects and set the overall strategy for project selection and prioritization. The project management framework that we've established has certain steps for the PMOC, project managers, and project teams from project initiation through project close. Project portfolios are aligned to the strategic plan. Right now, our priorities and make up many projects and initiatives. Not all projects are managed by the PMOC. Two or more of the following criteria establish a project as a priority. Here's a couple of the definitions that we're using. Not every project will be monitored by the PMOC, as I stated on the last slide. One that we sent through and is now sunset is Schoology. One that's currently being monitored is our Cronos implementation. At the last school board meeting, you saw an example of a project, which was really a portfolio of projects that will be monitored by PMOC. Most of those, but not all of those projects in the anti-racism portfolio will be monitored. If you recall, you saw a logic map. That's an example of what the project manager brings to the group for comment. In a few minutes, you'll see another project portfolio, the high school redesign, that is part of this work. There will be multiple projects under this portfolio and we will look at one piece of it tonight. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Yeah, it was pretty straightforward. Thank you, Jamie.
And part of the reason we wanted to frame it with that is that as you see with these projects are very large and trying to think about how you manage those and what kind of oversight we put in place so that those projects move along and don't get stuck and stay with outcomes not perhaps met. So the, we're going to move on to our high school redesign work session. When we look at our high schools, we see that many of our students leave us with some skills, but not all. Our college prep students leave us prepared for the content of college, but are they prepared for the world of work or the world of independent learning? Our work-based students are prepared for work, but are they lifelong learners that can continue to learn in other formal situations? Our students in the middle, are they prepared for either? How do we extend the opportunities beyond what we currently offer in our high schools? How do we redesign high school to be better tomorrow than we are today? And so we have three key questions that we, that are fundamental when we're thinking about what we want and how we'll be thinking about our high schools of the future, our high schools now. The first one is where will our students learn? And you know, you had the FNI report that I handed to you last time. It talked about the capacity issue that we have in Almaral County Public Schools and that, and how we landed on a center model. The other question we, other question we had was how will students be engaged? One of the, one of the things we know is a national trend is our high school students are less engaged than our middle school students. So how do we reverse that trend? It's the same for us in Almaral County Public Schools. When we ask our high school students and ask our middle school students and we ask our elementary school students, as they stay with us, as they progress in age, they are less engaged by the time they leave us than they were when they came. So how do we reverse that? How do we think about engagement in a way that is about around students' passion and interest? And finally, how will our outcomes be equitable? One of the things we know that we have academies now, we have opportunities for students, but it's, we don't see it as benefiting all students and we want to think about how do we design our high schools and our high school experiences that we can guarantee that all still, all school, all students are at the table. So tonight, we have a group of educators with us. We have Mr. Jay Thomas, Director of Secondary Education. He's gonna be leading most of this work session. We have Mr. Jeff Pillman, the Center's Specialty Planner. We have our high school leaders, Chad Ratliff, Rick Rehovak, Mike Craddock, Darabonam, Patrick McLaughlin, and Stephanie Carter. And they'll be sitting at the tables with you and helping you unpack some of the work that we're doing around high school redesign. Jay?
So good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to share and present before we get into the work part of the work session tonight. Start with the first slide is something you'll be familiar with. We shared with you before, the Fielding-Nariff FNI report and the addendums on that. And this is to kind of set the tone of, of, of one of the reasons we got to the point where we are with capacity and the centers. I'll start with a story. Back in 2009, I started as the principal at Almaral High School. And when I started at Almaral High School, we're 1,750 kids. And the very first conversation a parent had with me was about redistricting. It was, was her area gonna be redistricted to Monticello or not? What did I think about that? We're over capacity. What am I gonna do about that? It was the very first conversation I had and I remember saying, timeout, you know, let me, let me, you know, get in and walk around the school first. But honestly, that really was a prelude to every conversation we had every year at Almaral High School. By the time I left three years ago as principal of Almaral High School, we were 1,950 students and we had transport or building services coming over, taking actual closets where we had books in, turn them into workrooms for teachers. There just wasn't a lot of space. So previous board actually took up the conversation on redistricting, building a new high school, other alternatives. And as you know from that Fielding-Nariff report, came up with the idea of building centers and have an opportunity spread out throughout, throughout our division. And kind of that, that's just kind of the prelude to where we are right now. About five, six years ago, we actually started getting, having a conversation together. I was the principal at the time. We had principals, central office members, teachers get together to talk, to talk about what Dr. Collins was alluding to earlier. You know, kids in, in high school are less engaged in middle school, middle, less than, than elementary. What can we do curriculum-wise, school-wise, interest-wise to better provide opportunities for our students? At the time, we actually coined the phrase "high school 2022", so you may remember that term or see it in print somewhere. And around the same time, the Virginia Department of Education put out what they called a profile of a graduate. And they challenged each divi, each division in the Commonwealth to really take a look at their graduates. And you can see on the, at the time, our current ACPS transcript was more content knowledge-based. And what Virginia Department of Education is asking us to do is really have a better blend of the four worlds of content knowledge, workplace skills, community and civic responsibility, and career planning as we open doors and opportunities for our students as they leave our school system. So we embrace that by saying, we're not gonna be changing everything that we do, but we're gonna change the emphasis of what we do. And the goal is, again, our kids to walk out of our, our doors from, from our Almaral County Public Schools and have multiple opportunities available for them, whether it's going to the workforce, military, two, four-year college, whatever they want. We want them to have options and choices. That's parlayed now into what we were calling contemporary schooling and what you'll hear us now referring to as high school redesign. So with high school redesign, we actually have a website on the Almaral County website. And we are gonna be putting more and more of our resources and links and things like that for one-stop shopping for parents, community members, teachers, students, our entire stakeholder community to be able to go to and see information. Tying back to what Jamie Gellner was talking about earlier about the PMOC process, here's a logic map that we actually put together as, as, as we're going through this process. And there's five key components you'll see in this logic map. The academies of Almaral, program studies, curriculum assessment and instruction, our learning management system we just adopted, which is Schoology, and our continued facilitation, facility design and development and construction, excuse me. And a lot of times, we talk about these things in isolation. What the PMOC process does in, in this logic map is helps us really see how they're all intertwined and work with each other. So before I go any further with the logic map, just wanted to give you a chance to see it. I know there's a lot of information on there. Do you have any quick questions? We're gonna talk about it more if you don't. I just wanted to pause in case you did. So I'm gonna focus on one of the key components of that logic map, and that's the academies of Almaral. So this is the exact verbiage was in the bigger version you saw, but I've just highlighted it so we can focus on this today. And at the top, you can see the different areas are the key component, the key strategies that would come under the academies of Almaral, our near-term outcomes, which are this year outcomes, next year outcomes, which we're calling midterm outcomes, and then our overarching outcome, which for the academies of Almaral are to have students who are more engaged with school and their learning when their interests are visible in their schooling. So what we'll naturally see as we put this up on the website and continue to add to it is the midterm outcomes for next year. Next year, we'll become your near-term and we'll add new midterm outlooks in. The focus of tonight's work session is gonna be in the middle where, where it says, "Unpacking Virginia Career Clusters." That's the work that we're gonna be asking you guys to engage in today. And we'll talk more about that here in a second. First, we wanted to make sure that everyone had a clear understanding when we talk about schools, academies, career clusters, pathways. What does that look like? What does that feel like? So we put a visual up here to kind of walk you through that, that process. And so think about, you know, the top being our schools and our buildings. K-Tex, Center One, Center Two, which is gonna be in development. That's the top there. Within each of those areas are different academies. Those academies we named or created from things that we're doing, from the career clusters. The career clusters are national career clusters that we'll talk about on the next slide that are housed underneath of each academy. Underneath each, each career cluster are pathways. Those are a series of sequential classes you would take and experiences, not just classes, that you would take from 10th through 12th grade within that career cluster, which is housed in the academy, which is housed in the school building. So we just hope that, that visual would help us as we're talking about those things. Yes, sir.
One question here is, are you assuming that all future centers will be the 400 student capacity? Or could it be 600 and there could be three academies there?
I believe as we talk about Center Two, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at 800.
Wait, just this one then. Okay. That's what this is based on.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I was.
It's a conceptual diagram, so it could, the school could represent Almaral High School and there would be multiple academies. This is just.
And so that's why I was looking at the center and having it be, you know, with two in this case. But it's, but it's not all assuming that for future ones, it would be 400 student capacity.
One of the things, exactly. One of the things we think, we're thinking about is locations are about size. Some of, you know, Almaral High School is bigger than Monticello, is bigger than West, et cetera. So the size of the location will start determining how many academies or how many career clusters you can have there. So that's part of the logistics and the, the, the problem solving that we'll need to think about as we go forward.
So that's to be determined, really?
Mm-hmm, to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. Thank you, gentlemen. So on the next slide, we wanted to make sure we all had a common definition of career cluster when you hear a career cluster. So the career cluster is a national groupings of occupation and industries that share a common feature. There's actually 16 nationally recognized career clusters. Five states have already adopted a 17th career cluster, energy. And Virginia Department of Education is actually looking at that one right now. So in a second, we're gonna break down some of those 16 career clusters. But the, the whole main purpose behind that career cluster, as you see, we, we bolded, is, is really students' passion and interest. Students will have the opportunity to explore pathways through in-depth curriculum and experiences aligned with their passion, their interest, leading directly to viable careers, two-year college, four-year college. So when we talk about a career cluster, it's that, that bigger piece that we're really looking at. So on the next slide, and Dr. Collins is gonna be passing out to you the actual clusters 'cause this is a little bit harder to see in the slides. But here are the 16 career clusters. I'm gonna take my glasses off. Here are the 16 career clusters as you kind of look through these. And I just wanted to highlight a couple, and I'm just gonna grab them randomly 'cause you can see them all. But when we talk about, again, going back to that last slide, your career cluster and your pathways, what does that mean? So on the right-hand side, let me just grab, I'll grab the third one. Arts, AV, technology, communication, that is, that is a nationally recognized career cluster. What are the different fields or pathways that would come under that? Would be AV, technology and film, journalism and broadcast, performing arts, printing technology, tech, telecommunications, visual arts. Those would be what the pathway classes would develop into, into that career cluster if a kid so chooses to, to, to follow a career cluster. Grab one on the left-hand side, let's just say, human services. It's the second one there. Under that is consumer services, counseling and mental health services, early childhood development and services, family consumer services, personal care services. So that's how you read that as, as we go through. So just wanted a, a second to be able to share that. Any quick questions about the career clusters before we kind of give you your challenge here for the evening's work session? What we're gonna ask you to do, the, the purpose of the work session is to be able to un, for you guys to unpack those VDOE career clusters. And we're gonna ask you to start grouping them in groups of two or three or four, which could be based upon what you think are, are common between some of the clusters, what you might see as differences between them. We're not asking you to place them in schools. Just put the clusters together in groupings that make sense. So we actually have three tables set up and we're hoping you would, will allow you to divide yourself into two, two, and two over here. And each of our principals, directors, and, and people here are gonna be at the tables to help you unpack. We'll have a packet of information in here. And in that information, they'll, they'll share with you what's in here, which are some samples from other states and localities and, and some demographic information, from some survey information. And then at the end, we're gonna ask you to come up and, and, and present, each group present how you, you packaged your pieces together. So if you guys don't mind breaking up into the groups and then we'll have some time to unpack our information and do some work.
Do you have a question, Kate?
Sort of.
Yeah, go ahead.
So is your conceptual model of, of packaging the career clusters in a, in a fixed location? Or is this just as opposed to having each school or, or site have some of a, a smattering? So that I could be in the arts and I could have a cluster or pathway, something like arts, at Almaral or Monticello? Are we, are we looking at geographically packaging?
One of the things to, to remember is that this is built on top of our high schools. So the high schools will stay, they'll offer the same courses that they're offering. So we see these courses as being so specialized that at this point, we might have a couple of students from each high school that might want to do this. So by grouping them together, we feel like we'll be able to get a mass, a, a, large enough that we can offer these kinds of options for students.
Okay, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're good.
So if everybody would begin wrapping up their conversation and coming back up to the uh the the school board table, we've actually taken pictures of your products and we're going to have you guys present out your thoughts and rationales in your groups. We've taken pictures to present up for everyone to see.
Can you um on the cabinet agenda tomorrow, can you add coronavirus?
It was really hard.
I know, I know.
Katrina, we'll have to talk about the sustainability.
All right, so this is Dr. Acuff and my group. We we moved things around quite a bit. In the end, this is what we came up with. We like lumping business and finance together, obviously, and we liked marketing and hospitality and tourism together. And so we kind of smooshed all that in one. We tried to get it down to seven. Energy and agriculture, food and natural resources seemed like a happy fit. Human services, government and public administration, a lot of people work there. We also put law and health science together because if you do one of those fields, you kind of have to like to work with people again. Architecture, transportation, information, we kind of felt like all that went together with, you know, sort of artsy side of building things, but also the construction end of it as well. And a lot of these could be spread out over any of them, but we tried to find a balance of things that might be popular plus things that needed to go with something similar. Military education, education training could have gone anywhere, but military was left to it by itself, so we grouped it together.
Thanks. Thank you Kate and Ellen, appreciate it.
Just just one comment. I mean, we we vacillated between having diverse interests or pathways, so one site wouldn't be just one thing versus concentrating them. And we I think we have a mix of both.
All right. Thank you. Green poster board, I believe this was Graham and Katrina.
Yeah. Okay, we went sort of dabs at way in a way, I think. Kate, you can, I mean, Katrina, you can let me know if you agree. But we looked at them and we tried to maybe think of some ways to make sure that the student body at each place and also the offerings were more diverse. So when we looked at STEM on the sheet that was provided, mostly Asian and white students were there. And so we tried to put in maybe some others too that would make sure that the whole academy's body, population wise, was diverse. And also even what was being offered there, that there wasn't something that was thought of as being elite at one academy and not at another. So we tried to think about diversity at all, even though there were some common threads running through all of them. But anything else you could add in Katrina?
No, I didn't. I think you did a good job articulating. I mean, I guess, yeah, just trying to avoid the fear of creating basically elite academies. And I lost my train of thought. You did a you did a good job though. I had very powerful impactful things to say, and then I looked up and I forgot them. If I remember them, I'll chime in.
Thank you both. The final group, Judy and Jono.
I think our our theme song was going to Colorado, you know, because when we really spent some time, we were all over the place in terms of where things could go and and what could be subs of what. And and we started looking at at the sheets from Colorado and Minnesota. And we just found that the logic behind them was so strong that we're not 100% there, but we're largely there, whether it's the STEM, military, we got some great guidance on that because somebody said if you're an officer and you
So if everybody would begin wrapping up their conversation and coming back up to the, uh, the, the school board table, we've actually taken pictures of your products and we're gonna have you guys present out, uh, your thoughts and rationales in your groups. We've taken pictures to present up for everyone to see.
Can you, um, all right, on the cabinet agenda tomorrow, can you add coronavirus? I can't remember if you sent me the link or the video. The link to the agenda.
It's pretty advanced.
It was really hard. I thought like so many could've gone.
I know, I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Katrina, we'll have to talk about the sustainability.
Sorry.
No, 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 no.
We should get coffee at some point.
All right, so thank you all for participating in our, our activity here for the work, uh, work, uh, session. What we'd like to do is ask you guys, uh, in groups, and we actually took pictures, um, and so the blue group, uh, if you guys wouldn't mind going first, and what we just wanted to know is, is your rationale, thoughts of what you, what you put together and, and why. We'd love each group to be able to share out if you would, please. So who are the representatives of the blue, blue, uh, group?
Hi, so, um, this is, um, Dr. Acuff and my group. We, we moved things around quite a bit. Uh, in the end, this is what we came up with. We like lumping business and finance together, obviously, and we liked marketing and hospitality and tourism together, and so we kinda smooshed all that in one. Uh, we tried to get it down to seven. Energy and agriculture, food and natural resources seemed like a, a happy fit. Human services, government and public administration, a lot of people work there. Um, we also put law and health science together because if you do one of those fields, you kinda have to like to work with people again. Um, architecture, transportation, information, we kinda felt like all that went together with, um, you know, sort of artsy side of building things, but also the construction end of it as well. Uh, and a lot of these could be spread out over any of them, but we tried to find a balance of things that might be popular plus things that, um, needed to go with something similar. Military, education, education training could've gone anywhere, but military was left out by itself, so we grouped it together.
Thanks, thank you Kate and Ellen, appreciate it.
Just, just one comment. I'm, we, we vacillated between having diverse interests or pathways, uh, so one site wouldn't be just one thing versus concentrating them, and we, I think we have a mix of both.
All right. Thank you. Uh, green poster board, I believe this was Graham and Katrina.
Yeah. Okay, we went sort of dabs at way in a way, I think, Kate, you can, I mean, Katrina, you can let me know if you agree, but we, um, looked at them and we tried to maybe think of some ways to make sure that the student body at each place and also the offerings were more diverse. So when we looked at STEM on the, um, the sheet that was provided, uh, mostly Asian and white students were there, and so we tried to put in maybe some others too that would make sure that the whole academy's body, population-wise, was diverse, and also even what was being offered there, that there wasn't something that was thought of as being elite at one academy and not at another. So we tried to think about diversity at all, even though there were some common threads, um, running through all of them. But anything else you could add in, Katrina?
No, I didn't, I think you did a good job articulating, I mean, I guess, um, yeah, just trying to avoid the fear of creating basically elite academies and I lost my train of thought. You did, you did a good job though. I had very powerful impactful things to say, and then I looked up and I forgot them. If I remember them, I'll chime in.
I'll chime in later.
Thank you both. Uh, the final group, Judy and Jono?
Um, I think our, our theme song was going to Caro- uh, Colorado, uh, you know, because, uh, when we've really spent some time, we, we were all over the place in terms of where things could go and, and what could be, uh, subs of what, and, um, and we started looking at, at the sheets from Colorado and Minnesota, and we just found that the logic behind them was so strong that, uh, we're not 100% there, but we're, we're largely there, uh, whether it's the STEM, um, uh, military, uh, we got some great guidance on that because somebody said if you're an officer and you don't know transportation, distribution, and logistics, uh, you're toast. And, um, uh, but there are, there are so many, so many ways that these can all move around, and we were trying to think of, how do we get offerings within an academy, not that everybody's gotta take every one, but to at least be exposed to complement what you're doing as you're developing out, you know, what, what you want your curriculum to be, and, and what your studies would be to, you know, for the workplace, for the military, you know, for, uh, community college, uh, and, or for, for your college. So, um, Colorado, you know, going there soon.
But Kate and I, when we went to the V S B A, what, two years ago?
Yeah, I think.
And Hampton City Schools presented their, um, presentation, we were just blown away by the academies that they had, and so I was glad to see that we had that too as a model to look at because they were really together with their, um, presentation.
I think you, did you go for a field trip?
Yeah, we, um, actually Jeff and I, I went down and visited.
Right, we wanted to go.
Cause I think that, I, you all went on that field trip after Graham and Kate had come back and said that you were impressed with it, so we said, well, let's send Jeff and Jay on a field trip.
Okay, we, we expected to be on the invitation list when you went.
Now, when did you sneak out of town?
You might, I could sneak out of town and then tell us after you come back, right.
You did your field trip back-to-back when we were doing field trips for high school redesign. You could've gone there.
Really?
Yeah.
I have to say, after this exercise, I really liked the way Graham and Katrina put theirs together. I mean, not having like all business at one and, and having it, and, and looking towards diversity, who, who might be taking those classes.
The other thing, I did remember the little point, and it was not that impactful, but I'll say it anyway. It's always the case when you forget something, you finally remember it, it's not that important. Uh, it's that it gives students a higher likelihood of finding something that appeals to them at their base school or school nearby without them having to, um, travel. By having a little bit of everything, you're more likely to have at least something that appeals to you, so. I don't want students to feel like they had to travel to get, to get, that's the only thing.
So thank you all for, I know this is hard to put together, so many factors that go into it, and again, this is a first glance at it. Um, what we'd like to do now is actually bring up Jeff Perelman, who's our, our program and center director, and talk a little bit of the work we've done with, uh, teachers and with principals around this.
Thank you, Jay. Jeff Perelman, I just wanted to let y'all know what we've done, uh, teacher-wise, administrator-wise, school division-wise, um, to sorta unpack what y'all guys just did in a very abbreviated timeframe. Um, started really in earnest last spring, um, visiting a lot of places, calling a lot of places, there are several links there to counties in Virginia that do it. Um, you had a couple models, uh, there are a dozen or more states that have already implemented this. I've probably talked to 15 or 20 different divisions about how they've done it. Um, in September, uh, the board on the left is just one, we got together for an all-day workshop at Center One with administrative teams from each school, uh, included teachers, several administrative staff, probably six or seven from each school, and broke down and did what y'all guys just did with a lot, much longer time period to deep dive into some of the things like student interest and think about it. We still didn't put anything at schools, we just sort of grouped things together that we felt would be, would, would have some type of synergy around them, and then possibly a plus or minus 100 students or 200 students if we start thinking about putting them at different locations. Um, we, uh, also did this, uh, with counselors, we did it, uh, I think I remember doing it with you, Jono, during Making Connections, we had a little session, uh, during that. Um, and it's something where probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 140, 150 teachers across the county have had a chance to go through an exercise like this, and every time we've captured pictures and sort of start to see, is there any type of clumping that that does come together? We also, as part of this, um, and Kimberly Link has been very instrumental in this, have started an industry roundtable. We just had our third one maybe last week, where we're bringing business partners from the community to talk about how they can be part of this. If we're really thinking about changing the paradigm for student learning, letting kids have experiences outside the classroom has to be a part of whatever it is we're doing, and thinking about involving our business partners, involving our community at a deeper level as part of that. Um, some of the things that have bubbled up to the top, and I'm not gonna read it to you because you can, uh, read faster than I can talk, but the, the last point there of an overarching philosophy, kids learn best when they're making contributions to their family and community. When kids see meaning behind what they're learning, where they're thinking about how their learning has meaning, uh, and we use the word real world a lot, but they blossom when you give them things to solve that they're interested in, that have true meaning. And then the second one, uh, the career academies, we wanna focus on something where there's a sequential series of courses, where all too often a kid takes one course in a subject and they want more, and we don't have anything for them. So starting to think how we can give a kid a taste in 10th grade and more of a taste in 11th, and then a really deep taste in 12th grade, so it's not just sticking their toe in the water, but they can actually wade in and start to realize, hey, this is a career that I'm truly passionate about, or here's something that I wanna do, you know, for a long time. And then sometimes, I, I know from, from my experience, uh, as Director of Mesa, sometimes kids would come to me and say, I found out I don't wanna be an engineer. That's a very powerful learning experience when it happens for free. And so those are just some of the things that have bubbled to the surface as we've talked to educators, and we've talked to parents, and as we've talked to students, uh, throughout Elmar County.
So we wanna put this graphic back up in front of you again of what we were sharing earlier, our thoughts of our schools and buildings, which again, K-Tech, Center One, Center Two, Murray, comprehensive high schools, academies, career clusters, and the pathways underneath it. We put that back in front of you again, just as a reminder, uh, as we talk about a shot that we took. This is our first take of a draft of putting together, um, not only the clusters that you heard Jeff speak about earlier, the work we did with some teachers and with principals, but then actually sitting down with the principals and saying, all right, if these are the correct clusters, are these the right locations for them? So i- in front of you is a, is a back-to-front copy, um, of, of, again, this is a draft, that's why we put draft on there multiple times, of what it might look like. And so, let's just go over some examples. Uh, Western Abmar High School, as you can see on the front side here, has the environmental science studies, environmental studies academy, and the environmental studies academy underneath that has agricultural, food, and natural resources, energy. It makes logical sense if we're gonna have environmental studies academy to keep it at Mon- at, at Western Abmar High School, where it is. We've already put, uh, money and time in the facilities out there, they've got a program that's working, how do you expand it, what does that look like that's a natural location for it? Look over to Abmar High School on the left, and you'll see the Technical Sciences Academy, architect and construction, hospitality, tourism, manufacturing, transportation, and logistics. Um, then you'll see some things we did like the Performing Arts Academy, which are, are very strong in our schools, very well-supported and fundamental, uh, pieces of our, of our community, not just our schools, um, and, and we actually broke up different pieces of those. So you might see Instrumental and Vocal Performing Arts Academy at Abmarl, the Theater and Dance piece at, at, um, at Monticello, but this, again, doesn't mean that it replaces the core experiences the kids have in their base schools. In fact, you'd think it would enhance them. So an example I was given is, you know, a lot of our kids, I was at Abmarl High School for eight years, we had the, the largest high school, and it's, uh, it's still hard to ha- be able to offer all the classes and opportunities the kids want. Set design, costume design, they're really big, uh, areas of interest for kids if they want to go into the theater fields, um, but we didn't have enough kids to be able to offer them. Maybe one of the pathway classes the kids would take in the theater pathway would be enabled to deep dive in that. Um, Monticello High School already has a black box, it has the only black box, uh, I don't believe any of the other schools have a black box, um, at, at least as big as, um, uh, Monticello does, so it's a good location for that. That doesn't replace theater in our base schools, we still have theater in our base schools. In fact, we'd hope that the kids would still be involved in, in something with theater back at their base school and be able to take the experiences they learned by deep diving into some of these other classes back to their base schools. On the flip side, um, again, you see how K-Tech, Center One, Center Two, and Murray are also very important in this process. As you see, you can see the different, uh, opportunities we've placed around, um, around the centers and K-Tech, and what that looks like as well. So what we wanted to do now is take 10 minutes, we wanted to take five minutes and just ask you with an elbow partner, based on the work you did and the conversations you were doing at your table, and now that you have this draft brochure in front of you, what, what aligns with what you were thinking? What makes sense? What jumps out to you and maybe says, no, we, we need to look at this a little bit differently? Are we missing something, or is there something you're excited about? So just an elbow partner with the board, if you'd spend a couple minutes doing that, and then we'll take some questions and comments about that afterwards.
I think I'm impressed with some of these. Yeah, what'd you say in both of them? Yeah, right, right, right. Yeah, well, Elmar does have a really strong, well, it did anyways, instrumental performing arts, and, uh, theater and dance was really strong. So. So, I mean, these all. But, uh, something. And Kate? No. Something else too. It would be good to have them there, but, you know, when we were talking, like in our group about diversity, I wonder would this center end up being?
Yeah, housing.
More, um, elitist in a way compared to some of the rest.
I mean, in some ways, it makes sense.
Know the Health and Medical Sciences Academy now, but at Elmar Chella, would that? I, I know that's pretty diverse now compared to Mesa Academy.
I have some reservations.
They were both at the same place. I don't know.
Not the also ran stuff?
A good parent, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know how else to say it.
It would have.
I think, long-term, it, it makes sense.
So as you guys kind of begin to wrap up some of your thoughts and conversations, I mean, please feel free to ask us questions or thoughts, or, or please comment on what you're reading, we'd love to be able to hear.
The other thing would be that, uh, Business Academy could go to Center One. I mean, Center Two. Yeah, the Medical Sciences. Yeah, um, where was that? So, yes, that's a good idea that the entrepreneurship. Then put it at.
This could be repeated at.
Then, okay, right, pretend, wait a minute.
Even before this.
Then that, um, that might make it the same problem that we had at Center One, might then become a problem in busting Elmar. I don't know. If we were to tell them without saying where to move it, we could just say that, that's a concern.
No, but that has a creative bent.
These are some pretty nice combinations.
Yes, Jono. We're, we're just kind of looking at, and we like, you know, a lot of the combinations that are going on at the high schools, um, and there were just a couple of, uh, concerns we had, and, and at K-Tech. Uh, concern we had was with the combination of STEM and the health sciences at Center Two, and not with a recommendation about what should go where and all this and that. It's just that, that strikes us as, as not necessarily being complementary, you know, to each other, and that it could also be somewhat viewed as the elitist one again.
Sure.
You know, and so that's, those are just concerns we had.
I appreciate it. I, I do wanna make one comment though, uh, regardless whether it is Mesa and HEMSA that go over there, the programs are going, our academies are gonna change, it's time to evolve our academies in general, regardless whether they're, they're clumped there together. Um, it's time for them to grow and expand, uh, yes, there, there needs to be more diversity in opportunities, but it wouldn't look just like it does today. That may be one pathway, but what are the other pathways you might build out that, that would be under the sense of Mesa or HEMSA or things like that, but definitely fair point, I appreciate it.
They just needed to have some, you know, I think, interaction.
Something different in there.
And, uh, so, yeah, and whether it's one, two, whatever.
Yeah, and, and again, just to, yeah, absolutely. So again, just a reminder, this is just a first draft, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, absolutely.
I mean, and we were just sidebar-ing a little bit ago too, I mean, one of the, the nice things as we go along with this, and we start seeing, uh, where interests are and, and where other opportunities may pop up, um, this could definitely be very fluid. It doesn't have to be so rigid that Mesa is always here at Abmarl High School, it's never gonna move, what are different opportunities that pop up, and maybe we move programs versus kids at times, uh, as well.
It's great for a start, uh, start, absolutely.
And I just wanted to add, some of our thinking too was probably a third of the kids in those two programs are attending a school outside their district. So one of the things about kids moving to Center Two or getting it, if you're taking two programs that are already established, that gets a population of students at Center Two right away. Some of these other programs might start with 20 or 25 people. We can't build Center Two.
Right.
With 50 kids, you know, we, we need the 400, the 450, the 500 kids, and also by eliminating the application process to both of those programs, every kid that applies. So now all of a sudden Mesa's not 72 incoming students, it's 100, you know, 150 or something like that. So, so that was some of the thinking that went on, uh, in that decision.
I just think it's, I think it's really important to echo Jono's thoughts. Um, I have been frustrated with this process. I read in the paper that these academies were moving to this, uh, Center Two. I, I think a lot of work was done without input from the board, even though we definitely sought direction about what was going, and this is a lot to wrap our heads around in a work session when we got the presentation literally hours ago. It's completely rethinking, even the fact that now we're gonna think about it where every high school has an academy, the centers have these academies, we go, I mean, that's just all, it's a lot to take in.
Yes.
Um, and it leads me, it's frustrating because it seems like a lot of decisions were made without our input, and now they're being presented to us, and so I'm just gonna be a, a, a first pass, this is in front of me, Center Two is gonna be an elite model where you go if you wanna be a doctor or scientist. I'm just now hearing about the logistical issues of us having to fill the, the seat capacity, that was something that I didn't know was something we were dealing with. Albemarle is gonna be where you go if you wanna do construction, hospitality, manufacturing, transportation, journalism. Those are not comparable. That's gonna be a different school than our other schools. I would love to see what, and I'm not downplaying those professions at all, but I just had a conversation with Catherine about journalism and how hard it is as a career and how much money you make, and I don't want our kids who are going to Albemarle, the careers that they have if they have to stay at their schools are careers that do not pay. Um, and that's a problem for me. So I don't know if that was a consideration we looked at, but just from a pure public perception component, and I, I don't think I'm alone because Ellen, I mean, just the initial, here's what I see.
Yeah, and that's.
Is us creating tracts of, of privilege based on where you live.
Absolutely. I appreciate it, that's why this is a first glance, I was putting it together, what works, what doesn't, and how do we adjust some of these?
And in the Scottsville District, I can easily see white kids ending up at the center and African-American kids staying at Monticello, and it's segregating.
And, I mean, since I'm, I just wanna, this is the time to get the concerns out.
Sure.
I have heard echoed over and over again that ultimately students want cars if they're doing this. Matt, I heard you talk about your daughter going to Murray and how she wants a car so that she, or she, so she can travel easily and not be tied to a bus, that's, that, I had to take a bus when I was in college, that is absolutely an inconvenience, and it is easier for you if you have a car. Um, I was just in the courtroom last, this one. I was just in the courtroom last, this week, I was just in the courtroom and the judge was telling me how his daughter is going to plan, hopefully, attend Center One. And she's now wanting a car because that's what's going to make it feasible for her. And so I think, I don't want to, especially at this stage, bury my head in the sand and kind of pretend that these issues don't exist, and that somehow, once we offer these, all these students are going to be lining up, students that maybe need jobs outside of school, don't have the ability to wait for an extra hour to go down to a center. And we're saying that the, yes, they're going to be stuck at their homeschool, and their homeschool, what we're offering them is manufacturing, hospitality, and construction at Albemarle.
I agree with you. We've been having conversations about what transportation may be able to look like as early as next year, the following year, to alleviate some of those concerns. We've been playing with some things at Center One, but absolutely a legitimate concern and something that we're having conversations about.
And I'm not putting those, I really am not putting those professions down. Another thing I told Catherine, and she's probably the most powerful person in the room because she writes up the articles that people read, because I don't think people sit through these three-hour meetings and pay attention. So I'm not saying, it's not a value judgment on those professions, but I'm just saying it's a perception problem. And I, and I think it's one that many people share, which is why Mesa as it is, is this academy that appeals to our highest-income students because it's the most elite, it's the one that you want to do if you're going to be successful in life. And so, I mean, we have to acknowledge that. And putting those two ones in our center, that's hard to get to, and isolated from the rest of our schools, and somehow anticipating that all the demographics are going to change and all the students are going to be willing to do it, I think I'm not willing to sign up on that.
One of the things I would remind us is that these are alternative days, so that no student goes, and that's the only location they're in. So no student would go to any Center One or Center Two and stay there. So they would go there on alternate day. So A-Day, they would be at the center, and B-Day, they would be at their base schools.
Which, that's something that I just heard tonight. So again, it's another thing for me to wrap my head around because that was, that's not something that I thought was being anticipated. I will say that's what K-Tech does, and K-Tech struggles with under enrollment, and it struggles with not being a representative demographic of our overall student body. So I just want to know what's going to be different.
Ms. Carlson, K-Tech doesn't do that. And it's one of the issues we've tried to have them change, is to move to an A-Day, B-Day schedule, but we're restricted by the city. The other thing that they've been playing with is having midday transportation, too. So we're really, there's some things our transportation department is trying out differently, having, using independent vendors for different kinds of vehicles, like vans, different things like that. So, but these are all points well taken, and remember, the idea is not to do this until 2022. So we're very early, really, in the process, but we're doing a lot of planning. So your input right now is real input. We're not, again, these, these plans are not coming to fruition until the earliest with our rising.
Current sixth graders.
Yeah, current sixth graders. So there's plenty of time to make plans and change.
Yeah, with respect to Mesa, which Albemarle's in my, in my district, I mean, I know I've had conversations with Jeff and with Matt for several years now about the need to expand accessibility to Mesa, not having it as elitist, have more inroads into taking courses. You know, you don't sign up and 70 kids get in. There's a lot more flexibility, having it much more of the model that HEMSA is. And I do, and we have, well, I was aware that we were concerned, one of the reasons about considering moving both academies to Monticello, to the Center Two, was to make sure we had the bodies there, that we knew we would have the enrollment. On the flip side, for me, I mean, the Environmental Studies Academy has just been refurbished, did added to, and it's right there, and that's going to be sort of the academy out at Western. And even though HEMSA would be moving across the street to Center Two, it's a scooter ride up the hill, but we would be stripping away, you know, the most prestigious right now academy from Albemarle, which is challenging for me.
I think one of the things to remember is that there was a redistricting plan that was voted down. We actually had a plan that was presented to the board in 2017 to redistrict 150 students from Alamo High School to Monticello. And at that time, the board said, we're not going to approve this plan, we want you to come up with a creative way to redistrict students without redistricting them. So this is part of the answer to that, that on one hand, if you just want to redistrict students, we can redistrict students, and they would have no choice at all as to what facility they would attend. What we're trying, what we've tried very hard to do, and we brought in an international consultant to help us do it, is to come up with a plan that, again, the board chose a center plan. At that time, the board chose it based on, I think, very good rationale. I support that decision. I think it was a great decision, because I don't think it's a wise decision to just build another full, complete, comprehensive high school. At the only place we have, Profford, right now, which is all the way up Route 29, which you talk about an elite school, I think would be very comparable to just a very hetero, heterogeneous, homogeneous population. So what we have here is a very creative plan to do something instead of redistricting. And so, at some point, if you're going to do it instead of redistricting, because Alamo High School is also really overcrowded, and we need to alleviate the capacity there, then part, part of our rationale was that we need to have the students move and travel to different places. The other way you can do it is revisit redistricting. And then we wouldn't have, we could then add to Monticello High School, as we plan to do someday, there is a drawing for that, and we could distribute the academies around to those sites. So there can't have it both ways. If we're not going to redistrict, and this is just me as a staff member saying this, if we're not going to redistrict students to take advantage of capacity at the school where we have it, then we have to come up with a way to create programs that will appeal to students. One way to do it, because it's a big risk to do that, just to open up an empty facility, and you won't be redistricting students to go there, and even when you do, that's not easy, because when Monticello High School was built, the students that we've been trying for years to redistrict over there were supposed to go there, and they defied it. That whole area around Dunlura, that, that, that group over there just defied it, they didn't go, and that's where we are now. So I, I personally think this is a creative plan. I think that there's a lot of potential for students to want to go to these schools. We've been telling students no for so long about Mesa and about the, even the HEMSA program now has become an elite program, because we tell students no. You apply, you fill out a tax return to try to get in, and then we say no, because we don't have enough seats. And what we're saying is yes. If you want to attend, you can attend. And I think by lifting the cap off of it, there's a great potential for students to attend there. If you, if you move popular programs, and we could even use the eighth-grade data, we don't necessarily have to look at what kids are already doing, we can look at what they said they would do. That might be another way to, to make a safer bet with, with Center Two. Take the things that the students in eighth grade said they were most interested in doing, and we could, we could see how to craft it and have, and have those programs at that center. There's more than one way to do it, and we really are very early. But I just, I feel like that historical perspective of, we, we could redistrict, you know? I think people need to understand that, that's how this started.
Right. I mean, I think this, I think, well, I can't speak for my, all my colleagues, but I'm still very supportive of the center model, and I could, and we, I, you know, taking, you know, Katrina's comments, we just need to make sure that the programs at each school are robust and lead to well-paying jobs, or can.
And one of the things, when the principal was doing the same thing that you did tonight, but trying to place them in locations, is they took the student survey data, and they started pairing things together to try to think about capacity at the building. So with one program was, was something that there was a lot of students' interest, they might pair, for Albemarle, they might pair with one that didn't have as much interest, because we know we want to pull students out of Albemarle instead of pushing all the most popular programs there. So that was the other thing that the principals tried to think about, was that student survey.
You know, in part to that, and at some point, you know, in another, in another evening, I'd love to know why these particular ones, unless they're just fillers, you know, in terms of the particular programs to go into the high schools, and just placeholders for now, why those were chosen over others? And what, you know, what work had been done to determine interest? You know, because I think that's going to be an important part, because maybe there are others, you know, that you all have, you know, up your sleeves, and it meant in a positive way. And, you know, to potentially put in there. So I'd love to do a little bit more of a work session just on that.
Be happy to, because, and we'll do next steps in just a minute. But one of the things that came out of the conversations with the teachers and staff was this, the Performing Arts Academy, because they said, wait a minute, there's nothing here that shows our students' interest in this area. So this is the, those academies are ones we kind of added to the list based on what we felt like was community interest and want. So as we start thinking about going out to our middle schools and talking with our middle school parents, I anticipate hearing other things that we might want to add, based on our community and the, and the employers in this area.
But the data on this sheet you're saying was used to determine where certain academies would be?
To balance their.
Trying to balance, trying to think about that. STEM was our, the highest of interest, and that's probably, that's one of the reasons it's, it's at Center Two, because we knew it could pull a lot of students.
So, anyway, you threw out the idea of it just being a placeholder due to logistical concerns. What type of things would need to be put in the school to house the Mesa and the Health Academy?
Are you talking about if Mesa were to stay at Alamo High School?
No, if we put it in Center Two. We build Center Two, are we going to be building it to the specification of an academy? It seems, I'm just saying, it seems like those have high needs, like we have to build labs and.
Absolutely. I mean, so one of the problems I know I had is the principal at Alamo High School was trying to expand. We very quickly saw that more kids wanted to get into Mesa. We didn't have the physical capacity of the building to expand, nor did we actually have the needs of ventilation, science, things like that throughout, to be able to even expand that program in our own building. So I know that's one of the things they'll be looking at. I mean, Rosalind, do you want to speak about any of the Center Two work?
I think what you're asking is, we're still working, some of these are placeholders, but some decisions need to be made as we're designing High School Center Two, is that what you're?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we say we're going to put the Math and Science Academy, we're going to design a building that has labs and ventilation.
So one of the challenges, or slash opportunities of designing a new facility is, we have to maintain flexibility. So even if you said tonight that we were putting Mesa in there, we have to design that facility that you could put any of these academies in there in five years. So yes, there would be some heavy infrastructure that would be required of a science lab, but I would say it's true of any of these, and so we don't want to be too specific in our design right now to shoebox us in for an academy for the next 10 years.
And what money did we spend at Albemarle preparing it for Mesa?
It was done in conjunction with an addition.
It was actually, yeah, I mean, I was there at that time, and the, the original facility design was not for the Mesa program. That's why I, sometimes I bristle when we call it the Mesa Wing, because it was initially just going to be more science classrooms, science labs, because Alamo High School had a shortage of science rooms for the, for the students that were there. So when we were initially designing it, we were just trying to design state-of-the-art science rooms that could be used for the different lab experiences in a combined way, because at Albemarle, and may, and I, I think it's the same at, or it was the same at Western, you would have a room that was for chemistry and chemistry alone, you'd have a biology room, because it didn't have the ventilation, things like that. So we were just trying to have science classrooms that were multi-use and more, the, the state-of-the-art part that we tried to address was more around state-of-the-art equipment that was mobile, that it freed up different kinds of space in the classroom. So you had, like, instead of just having the dominant teaching wall and rows of desks like we were using, you could reconfigure it easily, students had different kinds of setting they could work in and use displays. But it really was a retrofit to the original design, and it wasn't budgeted to be a science experience. It was, it was the original budget for it, and what we had to stick to was science classrooms. So over time, it was, it was interesting, because then you, then you're, over time, you're trying to build in the things that the kids are using and need. And one of the things I've heard Jeff say was that whatever we put into Center Two, it'll be a great thing, because we can actually start with whatever the tools of the trade are in, in that facility. Even HEMSA is a backfill. It was originally a pod of classrooms, one of the pods, and the big innovation was putting a glass wall, there was no glass wall there, to contain the area. And then it was putting in a lot of equipment, trying to do the best we could with the space. I mean, it's, it's a miracle in work that Katina and her staff did, but it's all retrofit as opposed to having like a miniature hospital experience or something like that.
So the reason I ask is because ultimately, money says a lot about your values as an institution, and I would argue that we are, if we build this academy, or this center, and we, we build it around our Math and Science Academy and our Health Academy, the two academies, we've already put a lot of money, giving them extra resources and ability to do those academies. We are ultimately overfunding the students that, that we need at the least, because we've already, we've already funded them well. And so I also take concern with, it's putting us in a catch-22, is that, I've never read that. To meet our capacity goals, we have to put this, these people here, these academies here, we have to be ready for these academies, and then, so you have to approve these academies in order to achieve, I mean, do you get what I'm saying? So it's like we don't have a choice, but we need to have a choice.
Well, you still have choice. So, I mean, that's how we framed it, because we're just trying to be practical. There, there, again, I don't want to like, I hope, don't, please don't scream or anything, but, you know, the center is basically a, a school site that is not, doesn't have all the bells and whistles and all the extra wasted area that a comprehensive high school has. So that's why we purposely just called these things Center One, Center Two, because we don't want, we don't want to create an image of something out of this world. So if you just simply say, if it's just for capacity, it's just for capacity, that's all we're doing. We're not going to, we're not going to have academies, we're not going to do any of that, because we think kids just go to college prep, they're going to go to UVA, graduate. All right, you just put classes there. Just put any old class you want to put there, and tell students they have to go there. You could just do that. You wouldn't, they could just be square walls, you know, with rows of desks and a cafeteria, which I think is, is going to have a cafeteria. So if you start with that, and you say, that's the baseline, like, that's the stripped-down model, we're going to get capacity at this place, and think about it that way, and that's, that's your goal, is just to have the students move out of the schools and go there every other day, you could just simply do that, and just randomly select kids and say, Jay, every other day, you know, A-Day, you're going to Center Two, Jeff, B-Day, you're going to Center Two, and then Alamo drops down to 1,700 kids, and the goal is met. That's not creative, it's not innovative, and it doesn't address what our students' real needs are, to be useful and to prepare for something else besides college, which I think we're also not doing great at.
I don't think any, Matt, I don't think anyone's arguing to just put classrooms.
But you could, that's, that's what I'm saying.
But, but I'm not. What I am saying is I don't want to, we, I've already spent a lot of money making a Math and Science Academy, we have students there, we've already spent a lot of money making a Health and Science, a Health, HEMSA Academy. I don't want to redo those academies. I want to be a careful steward of the money that's given to us, and I would like to think that there are in this list other academies that if we have an opportunity to build a fresh, new one, we should be supporting, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying the same thing.
And possibly several of them.
Exactly.
But that's not what I'm seeing under the current presentation.
But that's, that's what I'm saying. You could, if you start with just a stripped-down idea, and then you said, what, so what would we build new?
Well, the other thing I would say is that none of these come without a price tag. So if you're going to do state-of-the-art, kind of career, kind of experiences for kids, you're going to be adding money into all these academies.
Including Mesa and HEMSA where they are now, because most of the stuff that they're working with in those facilities is old.
So if you think about manufacturing, those are 3D printers, those are, those are, there is, so I don't want us to think that the only place that we're going to need, you're going to need to invest is in the center. And to order to do this kind of model, the state-of-the-art, for those students that are interested in these careers, will have a price tag.
Thank you, Debbie, because that was another point I had. I absolutely wouldn't be, want to be investing all of our resources into these new academies that presumably not all of our students are going to be attending, and then leaving our base schools underfunded and with no thing. But that's. But that's something, like I said, this is something that is new to me as of tonight, that we're envisioning this academies at all, it's almost like returning all our high schools into centers.
But I, the main thing I want to agree with is what Katrina is saying about Center Two, the way that it's on the sheet. That it's very elitist with the two that's there. So if we would take either one of those and leave them at the school where they are now, and bring in maybe three or four of the smaller groupings, we could still have the same enrollment at Center One, but it wouldn't be having that stigma or that attachment of being elitist as compared to the others. So say three or four smaller academies in place of Math, in place of Mesa, or either in place of HEMSA, at our Center Two.
And, and the conversations y'all guys are having, we've had over and over and over again, things like transportation logistics could go easily with STEM. We had arts that could go easily with STEM. The whole, one of the other components is both Mesa and HEMSA were retrofitted into spaces. Neither space is designed for what the curriculums can be. And so part of that discussion was getting things like clean labs and places, simulation labs for HMSA, thinking about redoing the curriculum to make it more inviting for all of our students and not any type of elitist program or anything like that. We're, we're very cognizant of the fact that we, we need to reach more minority students in some of our programs. And we're doing a lot. We, you know, I'll just tell you, share with you, Mesa this year had tripled the number of minority candidates that it had applied last year. That's because we've reached out and really started trying to recruit. You saw, they haven't seen that slide yet.
Haven't seen that slide.
Okay, yeah, so that would be next steps. But part of that, and when, when you talk about we've put tons of money into Mesa, I don't think that's the case. I, I would literally say, I put in more money personally than Almarl County did. So it's like.
They gave us, initially when we started, it was an additional half FTE, which eventually went away, and I think $50,000.
Yeah.
Okay, when HEMSA was first built, then UVA or either Martha Jefferson give us some equipment for that?
You got to speak to me.
But most of that, that's portable, though. I mean, like the, the, the lie, the simulator, right? I was going to say dummy, but the simulator, right?
And to that point, I think that you would be looking at most equipment as being portable, because I think one of the things that you, you have to think about is having spaces that are flexible, that the career that shows up tomorrow that you need to think about, how do you, how do you retrofit? And how do you think about that? So that's one of the things that we've, we've been pushing all the architects to think about when we, they come in and they meet with us and they work with us, is how are you designing spaces that are flexible enough that they can do this today and three other things tomorrow?
I mean, although I would hate to see Mesa leave Almarl, I really, really want it to be expanded, to have greater access with all of our kids. And also, there's an incredible synergy between Mesa and biotechnology, bioengineering, that we're not taking advantage of now, that, that could happen with the two co-located.
I think we've, we've got a lot still to, to talk about. And, you know, this is a great first start, and I, and I think we've all got a lot of thinking to do. And we're going to have about a zillion more questions coming forward. Are there any last, last ones we could ask?
I am not going to belabor the point, I just want to bring up additional things so we can think about it. Another problem I have with this current allocation is that I don't think it changes K-Tech at all. I think there's a lot of potential in K-Tech. I think this would be an opportunity where we could get something happening in K-Tech that attracts students there. And as this is, it's what's already, already exists there. And I know we have a director that's willing to, like, energy, energy hasn't been on any of these, and that would be a, so this is too. There's not enough happening. Or even the cybersecurity and game design, those really cool things that, you know, that use the technology that some of it's already at K-Tech.
We've been having that conversation too, I know I've been meeting with Stephanie a lot.
I like, I like that idea of the energy program potentially at K-Tech. One thing I'm, I wanted, I just want to think about is, Stephanie and I were having an interesting conversation the other day. We were trying to figure out, how does K-Tech start to become part of long-range planning? So that we start to look at it as a facility that we could, would look at to renovate, to build, either build, build it to make it larger, or build our own facility on the site? Those kinds of things, we need to start having that conversation with the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, because it's an interesting thing where neither of the two localities puts it in as part of their capacity to try to address student needs. So I, I, I think that's a great idea to continue to expand it, have more at it. And I think it needs to be part of that LRPC, PAC conversation. It's, it's a great location, too.
Right, how much is the city involved in what you've just said?
Neither, the city provides basic, like, the upkeep, so, but still, we, we pay, we pay for the part of it. Like, for example, Stephanie said, well, capital-wise, we're getting a new roof this summer. And I'm like, well, that's not long-range planning. So the city will, will pay for part of that, because we're, we're in it for part of it, but the city will do it. They, they're the, they're the facilities people, but.
Is the city aware of us looking at the academy model?
Yes.
And its tentative change at K-Tech?
Well, as you pointed out, it's not, this isn't really like a change. It's just, it's representing it as an, as an academy, as part of our model, instead of just saying, well, we're, we're not, K-Tech's not part of it. So I, I, we were, I was talking with somebody about that today, where they added the career cluster around energy. And I thought, the fact that you have a lot of the infrastructure around energy, the work going on at K-Tech, like, the, the first part of most energy is electricity, as it is now. And that would be great to have something with solar, wind power, things like that. Students could really apply what they learn to a new field.
It's their future.
That's exactly right, you're not going to, it's not, it shouldn't be just about doing a circuit panel. It's about where's the power coming from.
But clearly, the decision-making at K-Tech is different than this board alone.
Debbie, what are the next steps?
I'm glad you asked. So these were the next steps we were thinking about when we put the presentation together. They might have shifted a little bit here tonight. But we thought we would have, we're, we're intending to have more stakeholder feedback. So tonight was the board's opportunity to have, to look at this and get, give us some feedback. We will begin having community meetings at all our middle schools in April. And that will be with our current sixth-grade parents, because they will be the first students impacted by this, by the academies. They'll be the first students to choose those and, as they're, as they're in 10th grade, as, as 10th graders. And we'll have school-based meetings with our, our teachers to make sure that everybody's aware of the, kind of the, the, what we're, what we're thinking, give them an opportunity to react to this and get feedback. So then we'd like to, we'll, we'll develop a web presence, so we'll keep track of all the feedback. You'll be able to go in and look and see what different groups have said to us. And then we'd like to think about publishing the academies of Almarl. But when, am I thinking about this now? We'll bring this back to the board after all the stakeholder feedback and tell you what we've heard and kind of where things are settling and have another discussion. Does that seem reasonable? Because one of the things we need to be thinking about, because the program of study starts driving a little bit of the pace, because we'd like to start putting this in the program of studies for, for the, not this school year, but the next school year. So students begin to think about that. It wouldn't be things that they were necessarily being offered, but they would begin to see how they fit with that. That also allows us to start working with our middle schools, our electives, because one of the things that we need to make sure that students have is an awareness of all these career paths. So we would also, in June, once we have established, actually, we don't have to establish the location to do Number Four. We can begin to pull teachers together to develop those advanced courses that are going to cause, it's going to take time. So those advanced courses would begin to be developed. We'd have a draft of those pathways next fall. We'd be speaking to our seventh graders then, because there'll be seventh graders next year, about their opportunities for 2021. And then all these courses, we begin to roll into the program of studies. Does that make sense, kind of as a, and we can adapt that. But the other thing I wanted to say is, one of the things that we are, we're determined to think about, as I heard from you tonight, is we are going to make sure that our equity dashboard talks about how their student reputation, the student representation in the, in our academies. And we just wanted to put up some current data at Center One. These are the 2021 registrations, these are the kids that are wanting to go to Center One next year. One of the reasons that we did Center One was a pilot. We were trying to think about proof of concept. Can this work, can we get students to leave their base schools, their high schools, and go every other day to a center in a program of interest? So we're beginning to see, with a lot of work that Mr. Kratic has done to recruit students, that we've got 131 students at this point, and I think he just changed this today, because I think yesterday it was like 124. Mr. Kratic, I'm looking at you. So he's updating this, and this is what it's looking like, which looks very different from our other, from our other, from Mesa and HEMSA and ESSA. So we're pleased that it's beginning with a lot of work to represent what we, our dreams of what it could be.
Debbie, is, is enrollment still restricted to seniors?
No, this is 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. Current ninth graders going to 10th grade.
The, the information I think that's missing from this is the representation of low-income students?
It's cut off at the bottom, 25%.
What is SWD?
I thought that was Students with Disabilities.
Oh, that is Students with Disabilities.
That's what, I, so I didn't know if it was low-income either, and I was like.
And I don't know if there's a period.
But we, we can get that to you.
Yeah, we can get.
I will say that data, this data is much better than I should. What's the number this is based on?
This, this is based upon 131 students.
This is on registrations, not on current, oh, we don't have, sorry, we don't have current year. I guess my, the one point that's of, that makes me fearful is the 50% from Almarl High School, because it's very close to Almarl High School. And I, I'm worried that Center Two, we're going to see that exact same thing for Monticello.
I, I don't know that that has to do with proximity, though, but remember.
It's also size.
Almarl's place is big, so this is identical to.
So that's kind of what you want, though, because you want to pull more kids out of Almarl by proportion than you do the other two places. We've even talked about having some kind of a, a weight for Almarl High School, because you want more kids coming out of Almarl than the other.
Well, that's good to think about, I wasn't even thinking about the, the size represented. I was just assuming it was because they were close.
Well, I do think you're probably right, Ms. Carlson, that, you know, that's a factor, because it's so close. But it also kind of, kind of helps. You want more kids to come out.
Yeah, 2,000 kids at Almarl and 1,000 each at.
But this is the kind of equity dashboard we would be looking at and presenting to you, along with all the other pieces we're trying to think about as, as our dashboard. Is this as important to us? And we will be looking at it and thinking about it and making sure that the directions we move has, has tables that look more like this.
Okay, well, another question that might be in the middle of left field. But when you look at this data, what are we planning on doing in middle school to start raising the interest of students in these fields? Because, like, what, 1.5 out of 5 points is, you know, really pretty low. So what are we planning on doing to make them aware of these career pathways?
So there's a couple of things just long-term, and I'll, do you want to come up, Kimberly? Come on up. One is that this is redesigning high school. The next thing we're going to work on redesigning is our middle schools, because they have really been kind of left untouched for quite some time around the parameters. They don't have common schedules with each other. There's a lot, there is inequity across the county in terms of offerings. And we don't, we, for a long time, we have just kind of paid lip service to the notion of students developing a career plan. The career plan forever has just been their course plan. You know, for anybody that's had kids go through the system, you basically make a course plan, and then it just goes in a folder and it doesn't get looked at again. What we're, we're going to be doing is re-envisioning the middle schools to pipeline into the high school program, so there'll be a lot more conversations around that. And remember, students will start out in ninth grade at their, at their base school every day. So that's an opportunity during freshman seminar for the students to do their career interest surveys, to have conversations about work skills, and to also really think a lot about what school they want to attend as a 10th grader. So we're not forcing the decision on eighth graders to choose a program the way we are now, before they even get their feet wet in high school. Kimberly?
Sure, it's wonderful to be here and be part of the conversation with my focus on supporting work-based learning. And I would just, you know, echo certainly Dr. Huss, a lot of what you have now shared. But I will tell you that the career specialists at the high schools, at each high school, we formed a team that is taking a look at our system, the NAVION system, that does poll and assess students with their early career interests in the elementary and middle schools. We're working with middle school counselors on accessing that data. Certainly, you have an exhibit of that informing your work here tonight. But we're doing a lot more with that, as well as bringing in early exploration and discovery, certainly not with a focus on in any way stressing students to figure out their careers in middle school. But just what are their strengths, values, and interests? And how does that cross over into all of the opportunities in high schools? I'll just leave it there.
And then as you think about it, that, then, the, the roots of that becomes the talent development model in the elementary school. So as we think about the next phases for elementary school, that'll be, that'll be, we thought, we felt that in terms of reform, it was important to start with the high school and then work down, because we were here for years that, oh, well, we do this in elementary school, because we've got to get them ready for middle school. We do this in middle school, because we got to get them ready for high school. Well, that's probably true, so we're changing what the kids have to get ready for at the high school level. That changes the narrative in middle school, and then you push down to elementary school.
I have a question about the career clusters. It, it seems as if all of these career clusters have been given the same weight and importance in this. And I wonder if that's the correct approach? Because some of these career clusters obviously pay much better wages. And so do we really want to treat them all the same? If some are definitely going to help people move into jobs that pay self-sufficient wages, as opposed to others that are, are not?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point for us to be able to look into when we take the work you did, the, what we do in our community meetings, and come back and look at this first draft and see, you know, what are those inequities that, that may be persistent?
Mr. Thomas, was that on this, one of the first slides that we, we put in, the, the information about wage earning?
We, I didn't have that in this one.
Okay, so we can, we can actually.
There is a table they built out that showed each cluster.
From Virginia, VDOE. So we'll, we'll, we'll actually push, push that into this slide presentation, so you can get to it quicker.
I have a hyperlink in there for you to get there, but then you got to click on each individual one to show the range for that.
And are we, are we treating them equally, because we know that we just have a variety of kids who are going to be interested in all sorts of things? Or are we going to try and kind of shape that into, you know, if we have so many people trying to get into Mesa, why aren't we, you know, maybe there's two sections of Mesa, you know, one at.
Well, I mean, I know that kids. What I, what I would say there is, you know, when you don't have, when you have fewer opportunities for students to do something different, they will, they will go to those opportunities.
Yeah.
So I would say that our academies have been those, they were designed to look different than high school, some of the high school courses. So I think that that might, once we open some of other opportunities for kids, we might see that they went to Mesa because of this and not because that was really an interest.
And, and part of the goal here is just to make high school more engaging. So we just want to, it's not necessarily all about having a student decide in ninth grade, I'm going to be in a particular field, and that's what they're stuck with. It's just, what am I interested in doing? The notion behind the career clusters is that they're all, they're all sustainable jobs. It just depends on how much post-high school education you want to put into it afterward. But there's a part of the, part of what they pack into the research that they do behind it is providing a wage range that you can, that you can get to, depending on the amount of education that you want.
So unless members of the board disagree with this, I'd like to ask that, again, depending on when the community meetings and school-based meetings are going to be in April, that we can start to get some updates on, on these topics, maybe in every other meeting between now and then. But based on when.
every other meeting, uh, between now and then, but based on when those are avail, those data are available, uh, maybe we can have, uh, uh, our work session that month be devoted to this, so that it's sooner as opposed to later.
So, you're thinking maybe the May work session?
Um, I, I was hoping maybe as early as the April, depending on when these are done. Or, we could potentially flip our meetings in, um, in May, and have the first meeting be a work session devoted to this, so we can, we can get to this sooner as opposed to later with questions, but we'd also like feedback in the meantime about other, some of the other data that were involved in terms of making these, uh, decisions, and, and, you know, as we were talking about tonight. But to keep that open, so that maybe we do do our work session in, in, in the first meeting, and, uh, I'd like to have this done with speed, but not haste.
And, and what we would like to do is to do the legwork and bring back what we learned for the board, because we really are building this for you as a board. This ultimately is, is for your vision, to support where you want to go. So, where, where we land, you know, I really want it to be a lot like the work we did with the funding request, where there's a lot of legwork with staff and a lot of planning, but the board begins to integrate, integrate with it, so that by the time we get to a decision, I want you to feel like it's a decision that, that you're making, um, with the best information that we can provide for you.
I think we, we're looking for that, too. Thank you.
I will also ask Mr. Thomas to get the community meetings out to you, and it, maybe if it's in your district, you might be able to attend the middle school meeting and hear from our parents about what they're, they're interested in and what they think, because I think that's very important.
Mr. Jeremine and I are working on the first, uh, copy of a draft communication. We're also going to the three high schools again, like we did last year. So, I'll, we'll get those communications and dates to you, but they'll be happening in the second, third, and fourth week of April.
Oh, okay, so later in the month. Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Just, just one thing, back, back in the old days, when the, we were working with the consultants about the center model, I mean, our concept was, we are building a 4,000-student high school system, that it's not discrete, that students can attend all the different academies, we're gonna try to work with the transportation, that if you were going to make offerings for all of our 4,000 students, and I know I'm, I was thinking Insular, Almaral High School also, but, um, but how can we provide the most dynamic set of pathways or opportunities for all 4,000 kids? Anyway, thank you for all your work on that.
I have a quick question, just so I can think about it. Um, how, how will it work, and maybe you don't have the answer to this yet, can students switch?
Yes.
I mean, can you apply to academy one year and then the next year?
Remember, there's no application.
So, and how is this reflected on their, it's not reflected on their degree, it's more just like a resume, they can say, these are the classes I took related to...
It would be reflected two ways, so just, I know we were talking, Katrina and I were talking about the Arts and Letters pathway earlier when we were at our table. Um, and it would, the way we reflect that is on the sheet we send off to colleges from the school, just saying kids, you know, if, if, if they are a pathway completer, this is what it means. Then kids can also articulate that in their interviews and their applications, uh, their, their resumes, if they're going off to jobs, so it would be the same way. So, a, a kid would not have to finish, they could switch, they could try different areas.
Or they, or they could choose just to do a, kind of what we do now, just a very traditional academic pathway if they want.
And they could blend pathways.
It's fine.
Absolutely, yep.
But if you string them together, then you can have, like, a pathway like you're doing now with the Arts and Letters.
Before we close, I'd like to thank our principals for coming and staying and being part of the conversation, and the rest, the rest of the staff that was here tonight to help us with this.
I was just gonna do that, too.